Good evening. Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of January 25, 2021. Our rise and please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, why am I getting feedback?
Roll call members, Councilor Genino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Ganaso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Councilor Rotundo? Is here, I see him on the list. Councilor Sereno?
Here.
Here, Councilor Visscondi.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Coram, is present. I think you have to shut your mic off. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of Regular Reading of January 11, 2021.
So move.
Calendar item number three, 2021 City Council Subcommittee List.
Madam Clerk, would you read them, please?
The appointment of Personnel Administration Committee Chair, Councilor Ganaso, members, Councilor Genino, McKenna, Powers, and Visscondi. Economic Development Planning Committee Chairman, Councilor Powers. Members are Councilor Ganaso, Keefe, McKenna, and Rotundo. Public Works Subcommittee Chairman, Councilor Visselfsky. Members are Councilor Ganaso, Morabito, Rotundo, and Sereno. Elder Affairs Committee Chairwoman, Councilor McKenna. Members are Councilor Genino, Morabito, Nova Selsky, and Keefe. Veterans Affairs Committee Chairman, Councilor Sereno. Members are Councilors McKenna, Morabito, Nova Selsky, and Rotundo. Ways and Means Committee Chairman, Councilor Visscondi. Members are Councilors Genino, McKenna, Powers, and Sereno. Youth and Parks Recreation Committee Chairman, Councilor Visscondi. Members are Councilor Keefe, Morabito, Nova Selsky, and Rotundo. Zoning Subcommittee Chairman, Councilor Keefe. Members are Councilors Genino, Ganaso, Sereno, Visscondi. Legislative Committee Chairman, Councilor Morabito. Council Members Committee Members are Councilors Keefe, Nova Selsky, Powers, and Visscondi. Public Safety Subcommittee is chaired by Councilor Genino. Members are Councilors Ganaso, Powers, Sereno, and Visscondi. And the new Subcommittee this year is the Health and Human Services Committee chaired by Councilor Rotundo. Members are Councilors Keefe, McKenna, Morabito, Sereno, and Visscondi. Laptop is muted.
You hear me?
I know.
Mine's muted also. Something to do with that there?
I'm not sure.
What is the nation?
President Zambudo?
State your point.
Ashley, put a list of departments in our next package, please. Oh, it is in there? Oh, okay, sorry.
Are you talking about the Subcommittee list? It should be in the packet, yeah.
Tony, I figured that was all set. It was with my laptop. My volume is off and speakers are off, but the volume is still picking up.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, can you?
Okay, we're good.
Hear me.
I don't have it.
Okay, we can move along with the meeting now that we've figured out our problems. Placed on fire.
Calendar item number four, hearing called as ordered on the application of DCM Realty LLC 25 Renee Drive, Wakefield, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council so as to allow the modification and change of use from an existing mixed-use structure comprising of four residential units and two commercial units to a six-unit residential structure at 7-9 DeHone Street, Revere, Mass.
This is a public hearing. We'll call for proponents.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Carrie Anne Green. I'm a proponent of this project and the attorney for the petitioner, DCM Realty LLC. My client seeks to modify and change the use of the non-conforming structure located at 7-9 DeHone Street, which currently contains four residential units and two commercial units. He is seeking to change the use of the two commercial units to two residential units. I look forward to discussing this project further at Subcommittee and to working collaboratively on any issues that come up in the interim. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed?
Mr. President?
I have...
Mr. President?
President, I've received two emails in opposition to these projects.
Would you read them into the record, please?
This first is from Mr. Ron Belroup, 11 DeHone Street, writing in opposition to the petition for DCM Realty to change from four residential units to six at 7-9 DeHone Street, as well as in opposition to the project at 1540 North Shore Road. While the revitalization of Revere and the neighborhood is great, I do have concerns with allowing more residential units than what was originally planned. There was a reason that the city only approved four units and eight units for both properties. I am against allowing more residential units as we already have issues with parking on DeHone Street. Those of us who live here have hard enough time trying to find parking spaces and allowing more rental tenants will add to the problem. When this issue was brought up before with DCM Construction, Dave, the developer, said he wouldn't rent to tenants that would have a vehicle, which turns out to be a lie. Parking is definitely an issue, and allowing more tenants will create more challenges, especially at night. Also, with the construction of 1540 North Shore Road, Dave had presented to us different blueprint plans than what had been constructed, as we at 11-13 DeHone Street property have less privacy now with windows facing right into our units. This was an issue with the construction of 7-9 DeHone Street, and Ira worked with having the windows moved as they were literally looking right into our windows. We brought up this issue with Ira regarding 1540, and was told that something would be done, however, nothing in writing has come of it. Construction of 1540 has also taken a lot longer than planned, which has left our backyard pretty dirty from the slow construction process. As workers throw their cigarettes and leave trash behind. While I understand construction will take place and debris will happen, we shouldn't have to clean up from DCM's mess or have their construction equipment in our backyard. DCM has also started work before 6:00 AM, continued construction after 7:00 PM, and even has done work on Sundays. Multiple complaints have been left with the city to no avail. I would like the following questions answered. One, what is being done to ensure those who live here will have adequate parking availability of both properties for current owners in the area and potentially new tenants? Two, when will construction be completed at 1540 North Shore Road? Three, what days and hour will construction take place? What will the penalty be for working outside these hours? Four, when will paving of 11-13 DeHone Street backyard and side alleyway be completed? And five, what will be done to protect the privacy from 1540 windows facing right into 11-13 DeHone Street? And let me just pull up the other email that I received.
Madam Clerk, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. I just needed to find that out.
And there's also another email in opposition from Ms. Adriana Cortez from 11 DeHone Street. She says, "My vote is no. Since I'm working from home, the noise has been nonstop since the project started, and the fence is still not up and our property is exposed. The building on our left, next to the Mexican restaurant, was supposed to have non-car owners, per the hearing a couple of years ago. This was supposed to be a stipulation in the leases. However, there are people living there with cars. Who is responsible for overseeing these projects and ensure what is being agreed? At the hearings are being followed by the developers. Additionally, we have many windows facing our building that was never discussed at the hearing. The amount of windows needs to be fair to ensure the current neighbors have some sort of privacy. But again, I question who is overseeing this? There seems to be a common trend where things are not discussed at the hearings, but they are being done secretly." Adriana.
Okay, any other opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Counselors, I got Judge Councilor Rotundo. Had his hand raised. Okay, he's obviously stepped out.
It was... No, Council President was raised, so I could see if I could speak on the actual Zoom, because I was having difficulty. Sorry about that.
Okay. Go ahead, Counsel.
I don't think you want to speak on the project.
Oh. Okay, so Council Sereno.
Mr. President, I'll defer to the Ward Counselor first, but I would like... I do have some comments after. Thank you.
Councilor Nova Selsky, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you had your hand raised.
That's okay, Mr. President.
I'm trying to catch up to this technology, you know?
We understand how newbies are. Mr. President, regarding this, you know, there's a lot of detail to discuss, and we're hoping to go into real detail when we have a Subcommittee meeting with zoning and go into it further, because we could be talking for an hour just on this one issue based on all the complaints that we're getting. So I defer to the Subcommittee.
Okay, great. I'll just let everybody say a few words, and then we'll go to Subcommittee with this. Councilor Sereno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing that now I'm on the zoning Subcommittee this year, I'm definitely looking at these projects with a different set of eyes. And, you know, I'll save my comments for Subcommittee, but I just have to say that I kind of am disgusted, that it seems like, you know, the City Council approved a special permit for 7 to 9 DeHone Street less than four years ago that included two storefronts, two commercial units in the buildings. And now we're reverting to just six residential units and taking those two commercial units out. And I have to say, you know, having my pulse on the street, this is what our residents talk about when they get upset about residential units. And I don't want to call him a shifty developer because I don't know him, but, you know, this definitely doesn't pass the sniff test in my eyes. So I look forward to learning more about it in the zoning Subcommittee, but I just, you know, off the bat, I don't get a good vibe off this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I've got Counselor Keefe. I'm going by the hands raised. Oh, you're on Zoom. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're next, though.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilor Sereno mentioned and Councilor Nova Selsky, this will be going to zoning. And I got to be honest, I'm looking at it really with a little cross-eyed myself. It's really strange to have this... They were already granted zoning relief and coming back without even... I mean, I don't even think they ever even attempted to rent the first floor of this unit. And I know that maybe commercial isn't as popular as it has in the past, but this was all once all commercial. So it's really strange. And again, I'd love to just know, and I know that the attorney's on, what's the hardship? And then there's another one that's coming right after this, but I want to take one at a time. What is the hardship for this developer?
Councilor, would you like to answer that?
Through you, through you to the attorney, please. Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
So I think my concern is with COVID-19 and just issues with commercial units not being as tenable because of the economic environment for them. So I believe that was the issue. But we know we're more than happy to discuss this further at Subcommittee, or if anyone has questions in between, to, you know, schedule times to discuss.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll save my remaining comments.
Thank you. Councilor Ganaso?
Mr. President, thank you very much for noticing that I'm in the Council chamber with you this evening. It's a pleasure to be here in this very cold night, inside and out. The... My thoughts, Mr. President and members of the Council, is this is contrary to all the beliefs that we have been preaching over these past several years, that when we make a little concession for housing units, you add commercial entities to it. Now, lo and behold, they want to change this without giving it a real, fair chance at the original progress. So I am dead-set against this. I can't say in any other words. We gave this individual an opportunity to enjoy our community and prosper, and now this is almost an insult to injury, to be honest with you. I'm going to speak also in the next one, but this is absolutely what our city is not looking forward to doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Ganaso. Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I heard that there was a fence that was supposed to go up, the cigarette butts thrown in, and dirt thrown in the Butters' property. So I think before Subcommittee, I think we should have the developer go down there, put a fence immediately, clean up each Butters' property, and then whatever they need, immediately before Subcommittee, because this shouldn't be done. And I think we should also look at the times that they're working with construction. They're supposed to not start until 7:00, and I think they're supposed to start at 4:00 or 5:00. So I think we should look at the times that they're constructing, because people are working at home more so, and it is disturbing people. So we should hold them accountable now before we go into Subcommittee. And the fence should be up if it was promised, the property should be cleaned, and we should hold them accountable for the times that they're working. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Vice President, Visscondi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree more with my colleagues and Councilor McKenna. It seems a bit egregious that we have a developer looking to... is asking for another special permit when one was already granted, when we have neighbors complaining about them not following by the rules. I have some concerns, and I will save my remaining comments for the Subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm going to say very little on this for now. I was the zone... What's that? Oh, I didn't see it. I apologize. Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very short and very sleek. I think the neighborhood said it all. I'm 100% opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me just say that I was... Council Rotundo, would you like to say something?
Why wouldn't I? Poor Tony. Frankly, I think if we speak to the developer, I'm sure they will acquiesce. I don't think any developer wants to... I don't want to use the word red-listed or what have you, but at any rate, I believe that developers, for the most part, are willing to fix their problems. I think if we send out a letter to him and hold off on any type of... special permit would have you, I'm sure this problem will fix itself very quickly. And I support the Ward Counselor, and whatever his wishes are, I will vote accordingly.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me just say that, since I have no counselors that want to speak anymore. I was the zoning Subcommittee Chairman for many years, dealt with a lot of issues. I don't look kindly on this kind of an approach. In fact, I'm a bit insulted by this type of movement. And that's all I'm going to say on it. I'll save the rest of my comments for the zoning Subcommittee, but my colleague from Ward 3 said it best, I think, that this is not the message we want to say, we want to send when we grant relief to these projects. It's not an open checkbook, and that's all I got. This is going to zoning.
Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on the application of D&amp;M Development RE LLC 25 Renee Drive, Wakefield, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to allow the modification and change of use from an existing eight-unit residential structure to a 15-unit residential structure at 1540 North Shore Road.
Good afternoon, councilors. Once again, my name is Carrie Anne Green. I'm a proponent of this project and the attorney for the petitioner, D&amp;M Development RE LLC. My client seeks to expand and alter the structure located at 1540 North Shore Road by removing the parking and changing the internal structure from eight residential units to 15 residential units. I look forward to discussing this further at Subcommittee and to working collaboratively to address any concerns that come up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Anybody opposed?
Council President, opponents also listed as Ron Belroup and Adriana Cortez for this permit, for this petition as well.
For the record, thank you. Any other opponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none?
It looks like Wayne Rose has his hand raised under attendees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just...
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street, Revere, Mass.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering when this stuff's going to stop. These people come in for one thing, and now they're coming in for other things. But you guys had a precedent, so I'll let you guys deal with it. But I'm dead-set against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other opponents?
A phone? What was it?
Down here.
I don't see any others. Okay, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any counselors? The Ward Counselor, Aaron Nova Selsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I know everybody's concerned, and we all are. And I have had recent discussions with the developer and his attorney. And I had spoken to him about nine months ago, and he was basing all his requests based on the ZBA approvals. And I know we don't have to do anything that the ZBA did, but ZBA gave several other developers large-scale apartments, I'm sure, yet. And he butts on 1540, one of these locations. So he says, you know, if the city gives it to one, why come to give it to the other? The original plan was to do... He wanted to do nine units with six parking spaces, and I said, "No." And I said, "You want to do close to 1 and 1." So that's where the eight units came up. And it was supposed to be seven parking spaces, based on those other developers' approvals by ZBA. May I say again? He said, "Can I eliminate the parking where they did and put in four more units?" And I said, "We can talk about it, look at it," and that's what I kind of agreed to. But then when I saw what he's coming in for now, I almost flipped. You know, coming in with 15 units, which is almost double of what he wanted originally. So I think we have to talk about this in committee. And, you know, as far as the windows are concerned, you know, sometimes you can't help with windows. I know courts don't use windows or views as a criteria whether or not to approve or deny anything. But these windows are in one-bedroom units, and there's one window in each unit in the bedroom and one unit in the kitchen. And so unfortunately, that's the way the design works. We've got to get some sunlight near right on the sun side. So, and not that I'm totally against it, or totally in favor of it, but I think at this point, we have to discuss it further and come up with something that's reasonable and that we can deal with. Okay, now, as far as the fence is concerned, the fence normally wouldn't go up until after all the outside work of the building is done, which is... That is not the case at this point. And the yard usually is hortopped before the fence goes up. This time of the year, you really can't get Class A hortotop to do a backyard. The backyard is, you know, bad, it's a mess. He has offered to pave it for them and, you know, make it more respectable when the time comes. So I think, you know, before we jump on things, and I know, you know, everybody wants it now, 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 construction-wise, you just have to take one step at a time. So, you know, I think when the spring comes, we can get it to hortop it and put up the fence. Now, as far as the 6:00 AM start, I was never, never, or ever notified of 6:00 AM starts. So, you know, if the neighbors talking, they never told me, or mentioned to me that they start early. So all I can say is, you know, if he is starting at 6:00, we tell him to stop. And his attorney is here now. Let her tell him immediately to cease and desist any early starts. So that's all I have to say for now. I just hope everybody holds off until the Subcommittee meeting, and if we're going to throw everything at him, we'll throw it then. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Ganaso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very, very thankful that you, Mr. President, has reappointed me to the zoning Subcommittee, because frustration exists within the residents of the community, but they also have to share the pain that exists with some of us counselors also. And this is a egregious type of action. This is the most bold type of presentation that I've seen in many, many years, doubling the size of the units under the pretense that everybody else is doing it and everybody else is getting it. And everybody, you know, when he sought permission for his special permit through this City Council, he didn't say, "Well, the next-door neighbor was doing this," or "The next-door neighbor was doing that." And the Ward 2 Counselor stated it, that the design concept with the one window and, you know, nothing much you could do about it. Well, you know what? If I lived next door to that, I'd be kind of upset. And I think it's within our provision to make certain that all the And I think it's within our provision to make certain that all the area is protected. And one other thing, Mr. President, I know at the zoning subcommittee, the attorney will be there. I would like to see ownership also present, not a manager, not... I want to see whoever owns this come forward and stand beside the attorney and face us and tell us, tell the city that this is good for our community. Then I want to hear what the answers are. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Guanasso. Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. My comments for the first are going to be pretty much the same. But what really, and I wasn't even going to say anything, and councillor Novosolsky mentioned the comments about this person getting this or this person getting that. So it leads me to believe that developers coming in here, and this one particularly, is only geared to compare himself with the lowest common denominator, and it's only about money. And some developers come in here and there's certain things that they may or may not get. But I can tell you that whenever the council approves something, that I would hope that it's consistent. But I also think that it comes on the merits of what those people do or have done for the community over many, many years and they continue to do. I can tell you that I've seen this name and now I'm reflecting just recently, there was a project, I think, on Washington Ave that was with the same name. And I don't have a chance to go back, but, you know, so, and then now that property is subsequently sold. So this is all about the money. Simple as that. It's not hardship. Simple as that. Thank you.
Any other councillors? I don't see any hands on... Okay, councillor Serino, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep my comments again brief, and they are similar to the first set. I went back and I did my homework and I took a look at that parcel. I went on Google Maps and 1540 North Shore Road up until about five or six years ago was an auto repair shop. So here we have a commercial property that at some point now became a residential property. And I just had a conversation right before this meeting with deputy Paul Cheever from the Riverview Fire Department, and he expressed his concerns about what was coming before us tonight. He was just confirming that this would go to zoning because the fire department is opposed to it as well. And he would like to lay in at the zoning subcommittee, but he couldn't make it tonight. Mr. President, if I may through you to attorney Green, where does the property owner, I believe, is it Mr. Massey? What municipality does he live in?
He lives in Wakefield.
Okay, so he does not live in Riverview. And again, this is what residents are saying, our residents are saying, that outside developers come in and just like councillor Keefe said, it is the lowest common denominator is they want to make money. I actually, I heard he did, he did own a property on Washington Ave, 237 of Washington Ave, and it did sell. And from what I'm hearing, I'm actually kind of thankful that he sold, given the reputation that I've been hearing. Hopefully, the person who bought it will be doing something good. But that's beside the point. But I'll save my comments for zoning. But again, I am dead set opposed to this as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Vice President Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of respect to councillor Novosolsky, I'm going to reserve my comments for our subcommittee. I do have some similar concerns as the previous, the previous, the one that, the previous hearing. So I will reserve my comments for that. Thank you.
Any other councillors? I don't see any hands. Do we have any participants there? No. Okay, great. This is, my comments from the last hearing are similar, so I'm not going to prolong this. This is going to the zoning subcommittee. Yes, councillor Janino has personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do apologize. I meant to do this at the very, very beginning of the meeting, but Zoom threw me off a little bit. I just wanted to take a moment, take a point of personal privilege to offer my condolences and the city council's condolences to Paul Argenzio, Colleen Argenzio and their family on the loss of Paul's mother, Betty, earlier, later last week. So I just wanted to take a moment to share our condolences with the superintendent during this most difficult time. The Argenzio family is a very well-known family in the city and have done so much for all of us that I think it's really important that they know that we're here for them when they need them. So at this moment, I just ask that we all just take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next up is communications, calendar item number six, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval for the warrant for the special state election on Tuesday, March 30th, 2021.
I see the commissioner in the audience. Commissioner? She allowed to speak?
Sir?
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. The warrant for the special state election and the special state primary is just information to the voters. It's in English and Spanish and it advises the voter of the upcoming election, the wards and precincts that are involved with the election, who is on the ballot, the times the polls open. It will be posted on the website once approved. And I respectfully request your permission for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? All opposed? So vote.
Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval of the 2021 election calendar.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I respectfully request, there was, councillor Novosolsky has requested that we change the date of the preliminary from September 7th to September 14th. It is the 7th, as it turns out, is Rosh Hashanah, and he would prefer to have the election a week later. I don't have a problem changing it. It's just that for consistency's sake, we always try to keep it on the first Tuesday, the first week in September. And that's basically because when you get much more into the month of September, the kids go to school. The candidates are anxious because the nomination paper process starts around May 4th. So it's, if you don't have a problem with me changing it, that is fine. But if you folks want to keep it at that date, that's fine as well.
Councillor Novosolsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. As Diane said, you know, I did request, you know, due to the high Jewish holiday, that we move it one week. And it's not that we haven't done it before. And, you know, whenever the signatures were doing, don't have a, it isn't really an issue because they're already done and the ballots are already printed. So, you know, I asked that they change it. I had already also asked, and it's also regarding the next election, about mail-in ballots, whether or not we're eligible for the city election to do mail-in ballots along with early voting and also absentee ballots, which, which we know are legal anyway. When I did talk to Diane and, you know, I gave her a heads up so I wouldn't, you know, surprise her at this meeting, I emailed her yesterday. And she didn't come back and say that the mail-in ballots are only good until March 31st, which is this year. So technically, they could be using them for this preliminary and final election for state rep to fill Representative DeLeo's slot. So right now, the city is not eligible, you know, unless there's some kind of legislature, legislative action taken to approve it. And early voting, I don't know, I don't remember where that stands, but...
Okay, sir, I can fill you in. For the local election, there will only be absentee voting. We will not have vote by mail that expires March 31st. And there is no in-person early voting in local elections. I confirm that with the state today. So the only thing, it will be as it is always, and that'll be absentee voting. And voters will have until noon the day before the election to vote by absentee ballot in the office. And they have four business days prior to that to apply for an absentee ballot by mail. And I don't have a problem redoing the calendar if that's what the city council requires.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Diane.
My pleasure, sir.
Councillor Novosolsky, I take it that you're not flexible on your request. Is that, is that correct?
Not on the Rosh Hashanah day, no, no, sir.
Okay, so we're going to approve this as amended. All in favor? All opposed? So vote it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval of the warrant for the special state primary on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2020.
Again, this is to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of Robert A. DeLeo.
Right.
And it's basically an information sheet to the voters informing them of the election, the dates, the times, and who's on the ballot. And I would respectfully request your approval.
Fine. Anybody have anything on this? Doesn't look like anybody has anything. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, wait.
Thank you, sir.
Councillor McKenna?
I was just being, raising my hand in favor.
Oh, okay. Don't trip me up like that. All in favor, all opposed? So vote it.
Thank you.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city auditor concerning an appropriation to the stabilization fund relative to the sale of city-owned land.
I believe the auditor is here, Chief Financial Officer.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Viskey.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much.
This council order is with regard to the...
Does he have to say where he's from?
Oh, I'm from, I'm from 281 Broadway, Riverview, Massachusetts. Also 87 Harris Street, Riverview, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. This appropriation is in line with the sale of the tax titled land we had a couple of months back. We have closed on both properties and per city ordinance, 50% of the proceeds of that sale shall be deposited into the city's stabilization account. So this council order is just following through with those directions from the city ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, hopefully get approval on this one.
Any councillors? Councillor Novosolsky?
Mr. President, through you, Mr. Viskey. What are those, what's the address of those two properties, please?
The address was, one was on 40 Union Street, which I believe was a home, a two-family home. And the second one was on Fairfield Street, and there's no address because they were vacant lots. So Fairfield Street and 40 Union Street, councillor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other councillors? Yeah, Ira's already spoken. Looks like that's it. Are we voting separately on all of these? Okay. So do we need a roll call for this? Okay, roll call.
In accordance with the provisions of section 3.01.020B of the Riverview revised ordinances, shall the city council approve a transfer from the public auction proceeds to the stabilization fund in the amount of $99,888? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and council president Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 10, communication from the city auditor relative to an appropriation for the Broadway signalization project.
Mr. Viskey? Hello, again, Richard Viskey, Twitter on Broadway. This request is to supplement the bond, the grant that we received from the Commonwealth, 1.5 million to overhaul the traffic signals from one end to the other of Broadway. We put that project out to bid with some building options. One of them was the base bid, which came in about $43,000 over the 1.5. And bid alternate number one was the grinding out and repaving of all the crosswalks from one end of Broadway to the other as part of this project, which we all thought was a good idea. So this is a great project where we can leverage $200,000 against a $1.5 million bond and really try to improve the traffic flow and traffic light signaling on Broadway. And I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that I could. This is something that is being managed by the planning department. But with regard to the finances, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I see that we have Mr. Moore on it, so we're going to let her... Go right ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking this request. As Rich said, we are running a little bit over the 1.5 million grant that we received for this project. But we are feeling pretty confident for this project to be done right and to be complete and everything to work the way it should. The additional 42 is for the signalization and the bring all of the crosswalks and pedestrian signals up to ADA compliant. The additional paving and striping, it would just be in the intersection. That would mean that all of those areas would be repaved and all of the markings for the crosswalks would line up with the new addition of the pedestrian signals throughout the corridor.
Okay, so now I'll open this up to councillors. Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Moore and/or Richard Viskey. This is obviously, this is really going to be a nice project for the city, especially to help with some traffic issues and bottleneck through the seven inch sections on Broadway. But when do you see this project starting and when would you think potential completion would be for this? Ms. Moore?
The project, the project has already gone out for bid and we have received three bids and we have not yet to award the bid to the lowest bidder. We are waiting on the appropriation of the additional funds. So depending on what the decision is tonight, we will be able to officially award the bid to the lowest bidder, which would happen in the next couple of weeks. We are on schedule, if this goes as planned. We would like to begin this project in March or the beginning of April, but no later than April 1st. We are actually, this grant, I believe, and I have to double-check the grant paperwork, but it, we are set to be done with this grant by, by the end of the fall construction season. So that would be like November 30th. So that's the reason for this request tonight. We would like to start this project in April so we can get it, everything done, hopefully wrapped up by September, weather permitting.
And just to, just to build on that, we can't execute any contract without all the funding in place. So we're kind of at a standstill just waiting for the supplemental appropriation so we can execute the contract.
And the bid itself, the lowest bid that has come in, has been verified in terms of, you know, all of the numbers are, are coming in the way they should be. The contractor itself, all the reps... The contractor itself, all the references have been verified, so we're just waiting on the last piece of funding.
Any other counselors? I see Commissioner DeChico. Ralph, who's that? Ira, go right ahead, Ira.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a clarification, this number that we're talking, this item is $216,103. Is that correct?
Yes, that is the overage for the base bid and then for bid alt.1.
Okay, and this is all coming out of stabilization? Richie? Richie Viskey?
Rich?
He's there.
Oh, wait, I got muted. Sorry, I was talking to myself. The 1.5 million is a grant award, so that's a award from the Commonwealth. The $216,103 is proposed to come from the city's community investment trust, which would bring the total project cost to $1.716 million, Counselor.
So it's not stabilization, it's community trust?
Yes, that's the funding source recommendation, sir.
Okay. And just, you know, through you to Julie, I know it's, you know, none of this is really my award, but when you say all intersections, you're only talking the intersections that have traffic signals, not smaller streets like.
It would be all the intersections beginning at Beach Street all the way down to Revere Street. And then they would have to accommodate some milling and paving, depending on the intersection itself and the work going into it. But it could be anywhere up to 12 to 25 feet in the intersecting sized street. So that would be your Beach and Fennel, Human Street, Central Ave, as well as School Street and Cushman. There's going to be considerable work done there because of the way that intersection all meets. And also as well as Revere Street and Marvin Street.
Okay, so those are all, those are all the intersections that have actual traffic signals?
Correct.
So what about the smaller streets like Prospect, they have Mountain Ave, how far are you?
Those would not, there would be no work done to those intersecting because they have no crossing signal or pedestrian traffic light at all. So it would just be the main signals that are, that have some sort of pedestrian or traffic light signal at that corner.
They wouldn't get crosswalks either? I mean, the handicap ramps?
They already have handicap ramps. We did Broadway the last couple, over the last three or four years, there was handicap ramps put in.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chairman of the Commission on Disabilities, Ralph DeChico.
Thank you, Mr. President, Ralph DeChico, Revere Commission on Disabilities, 249 Broadway Revere. Just wanted to take the opportunity to weigh in my information and thank Julie for bringing this up. This will go a long way in helping, bringing EDA compliance through this project. Julie worked rigorously on trying to get a grant to help fulfill this through the MOD, which is the Mass Office on Disabilities. But unfortunately, we found out a few weeks ago that we did not get that. So this is why we had this avenue. But this appropriation of money will greatly benefit not only the work, but also the disabled along with the senior citizens of Revere. So it'd be great to get done. It's long overdue. And like she had mentioned, it's going to be this, a lot of the automated signalization money, the ramp cutting and whatnot has to be done. Especially one of the greatest needs is the area of the Cushman Ave, Broadway School Street area, which I think a lot of the work is going to be tied into there because of some redesigning that has to be done there.
Yeah, that intersection is probably going to be the most significant in terms of changes and in terms of just the way the intersection functions. There is going to be a lot of work and rework for that intersection. I mean, you have six to seven crosswalks all in that one intersection. And that really is, just as a point of reference, that is the highest, most heavily used intersection across that whole border. And we have seen an increase of pedestrian traffic by 40% all day long, not just during school time. So it's pretty significant. So people are using that intersection throughout the day, all types of pedestrians, school-aged children to, you know, adults. So it's worth to be noted, the investments there will really be significant for everybody's safety.
Thank you for all your hard work on that. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso. I got to start looking over there.
You got to start looking and paying attention. There's a couple of frozen counselors here. Mr. President, I think it's a great project based on the fact that when you're talking about improvement on the Cushman Ave area, in terms of foot traffic, you couldn't get any greater foot traffic that occurs at that particular site based on the fact that it's a feeding source for three schools, the high school, the Whalen School, and the Lincoln School. And so, you know, and then given the day-to-day traffic that's given by all the residents who live in the area. So I think an upgrade in that particular case is much needed. We've been looking forward to this for years. And I think that, based on the hills too, because the little incline that it's there, you've got to, it's very, very dangerous if we don't get the proper signalization, the proper footing for people to walk. And there are many seniors who live in the area, right down the street in Adams Court. So it's welcomed, we're thankful that it's coming, and I think this is money well spent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Madam Clerk, on your order.
Shall the city council appropriate $216,103 from the community investment trust for the purpose of upgrading signal technology and pedestrian accommodations for Broadway? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith, I'm sorry, Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you very much, everybody. This will be really a significant improvement on Broadway.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor relative to an appropriation for upgrades to the city's financial and operational software.
Mr. Viskey.
Hello, thank you. We have been trying to get all of our financial software coordinated so that we can actually have one system that talks to one another so that we can become more efficient here and have more timely reporting and eliminate some of the double entries we do. Try to make it as simple as possible, the accounting and the payroll and all the procurement runs on one set of software. And all of our collections, utility billing, our bridge from our Patriot property, tax assessing is on a totally different software. The one software, Tyler Technologies, Amunis, is a pretty popular ERP system that is used pretty much throughout the United States, but certainly probably most of the larger communities in the Commonwealth would use this Amunis software. The other collection software and accounts receivable and billing is a company called Govern that has been with the city for a long time. But quite frankly, they've kind of, there are, there's only one or two communities in the whole Commonwealth that use that. And it becomes pretty difficult for us to manage our financial operations with this bifurcated system. So with the help of George Pazos, our new IT director, and all of us financial departments, we got together and we made a decision that we want to try to all get on one uniform system here through Amunis and Tyler Technology. And there are some one-time fees for licensing and project management and implementation costs that we're seeking to get an appropriation for this evening so we can start this process. It'd be about an 18-month process by the time we're finished. But we have to basically port over all of our historical data and all the history of how we've done business from our assessing software, motor vehicle excise billing, tax billing, tax title, our cash sharing system, our utility billing, all of our accounts receivable. It's a massive project, but long overdue, and we're really excited to kick this off. And we're hoping that we can get this appropriation so we can get this off the ground. Like I said, it's going to be an 18-month process all in to convert all this data and software. And we may even have to run two systems for a while to make sure we get the kinks out. But certainly a big task we're taking on, but very exciting and I think will bring us forward as a community. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions on this. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. Auditor, I really compliment you on this because Amunis is a software source that's known nationwide, very reliable and safe-worthy. Cyber security is second to none. And I think that its functionality is probably the best source that we could possibly use. And to bring it to the city of Revere and combine the efforts that we had with the Govern platform, I think that this is going to benefit our community and make things more organized and readily available for our users to perform the functions of their duties as employees of the city. So congratulations to you, sir, for coming forward with such a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we spoke about this before, Mr. Viskey, and I'm glad that you're going to be able to help this through, knowing that it's going to reduce some redundancies and create a leaner environment. Would you say, I mean, it's $485,000, which I think is probably investment-worthy. Do you think that there'll be a, how many years until you get a return on investment like, with something like that?
Just to be clear, so there are, there's two components. We have $425,000 for the Amunis conversion, and there's a $50,000 for work on the software that is being requested by the chief infrastructure and data team. So the $425,000, I think, again, it's going to take us 18 months to convert this over. We're going to probably have to run two systems for a while to make sure that there's, it's all fluid and everything reconciles. And then I certainly believe that once we get this up and running and there's synergies where we, there's a lot of manual entry we do, fellows, all the time. Every receipt that we get, we have to manually enter into two systems, and certainly will create some capacity. And I think by year two, once we have this up and running, we can really get a better idea on what that means for, you know, the labor and full-time equivalents and such. But there will definitely be some time savings, and that would, that should transfer into some savings on salary accounts for sure.
Good, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, so we'll move on to participants. Eric Lomadecchio.
Hi, good evening. Eric Lomadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just wanted to go on the record as in favor of this. I think that it might be a little bit of financial pain upfront for the city, but I think the efficiency gain on the backend might make for a much better resident experience. There are two things that I just wanted to ask if Mr. Viskey could possibly include these into the RFP process for the vendor or consideration of the system as they're shopping around. And it sounds like they landed with Amunis, but hopefully it has some of these features. So one resident shared with me that when she went to pay her tax bill online, she was charged a rate as a percentage of her bill or as a percentage of what she was paying. I'm not sure that the system could set that to maybe a fixed fee for the city or maybe that fee could go away altogether if the system is that efficient. I just wanted to put that.
The fee that's charged if she's using a credit card is a convenience fee of the, from the credit card, they charge us to, you can't take a discount on taxes. So if you buy something in the store with a credit card, someone's taking 2% or 3% of that money for the convenience of using that. We're not allowed by Mass General law to reduce the amount of taxes, so that fee has to be passed along to the person that's using the credit card. But we've absorbed those fees since the pandemic, and we've actually been absorbing all of the credit card fees. But it's a little bit separate from what we're talking about. I understand exactly your point, but it's more of a function of the bank and making sure we get credit in full for a bill that's paid and not a percentage of a whole that would create not only receivables left on the books, but reconciliation nightmare. But we are also trying to look for ways to modernize some of those, some of those special features. And again, it's hard to do it with an antiquated software system like Govern. So once we get this up and running, I think there'll be some phase two stuff where we can try to bring in some stuff like, you know, more efficiencies as far as online payment. Hopefully get away from passing out pay stubs every week and have them downloaded from the system, get away from a lot of paper. The Amunis technology is vast and they keep improving it. And we're all hosted in the cloud now. We're a SaaS client of Amunis. So all of our stuff's in the cloud with redundant systems for backups, et cetera. And again, we're just trying to move forward and make this a 21st century operation.
Oh, that's great to hear. And I work in the banking end, so we actually call that fee interchange income on our end, but.
Yeah, interchange fees, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for the explanation. And the second was another item that also affected a resident. So they mentioned that they registered their motorcycle later in the summer of last year, and as a result, they paid their excise tax bill later in the year. When it came time for the resident parking sticker program, they'd never received a sticker, and they would have had to fill out some extra paperwork to get one. Will there be any communication between the new payment software and the other departments like parking?
Well, just to be clear, the motor vehicle excise taxes all runs through the R and V. We get a list from them, and we're just a pass-through and we collect it. That's a local tax that stays with the city. So we don't have much control over that. As far as access to our, you know, motor vehicle excise receivable list, I don't know how relevant that is to a particular entity, but certainly working through a lot of kinks with the residential parking, it's the topic of the month, let's say. But I got to give credit to our fellows over at the parking department for doing a really good job. I mean, I went over there today just to drop off some papers, and they had to line out the door. This is the third time in a row I've done it. So I'm open for ideas on how to make it a better system, but I will say this, it's the parking sticker program's working, and we are starting to see a lot more people register their cars in the city, and that will generate that car tax for us so it doesn't go to some other community and create some capacity on the streets when we want to park our vehicles at night. But as far as, you know, having access to our data bank of receivables for motor vehicle excise, I'm not quite sure how useful that would be for a resident, but maybe we could talk more offline about some of your ideas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We got to move on here. Okay. On the motion.
Shall the city council approve a transfer from the capital improvement stabilization fund in the amount of $475,000 to perform consolidated financial software upgrades in the amount of $425,000 and to purchase Cartograph software in the amount of $50,000? Counselor Janino.
Yes, sorry, I was stuck on mute.
Voting yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY 2021 capital improvements loan order.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening. As you recall, last spring, we brought forward our five-year capital improvement plan and a capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2021 that was approved as part of the budget process. We were able to secure the pay-as-you-go financing through the city's free cash and stabilization fund. Between that time and now, there's been a few updates to the capital plan to address some issues that may not reconcile with the budget you have as part of 2021. And I'll explain what those items are. But basically, we're coming forward right now to ask for the authorization to borrow the funds to complete the fiscal year 2021 capital improvement budget. And I can walk through all of those. And I can walk through all of those, either just take the questions or explain them. The two new things that you'll see that weren't on the budget is a trash truck in the amount of $160,000 that the DPW would like to see included so that they can have an updated trash truck to do all of the public barrels and parks and such. And there's also two $60,000 late communications for accelerated MSBA repairs projects. So all the other stuff that's in there was all part of the plan. We did bump up one of the pumper trucks. We were going to hope to stagger the pumper trucks we have to replace, one in '21 and one in '22. However, the rates in the market is such that we're at historic lows in bonding. We did a temporary borrowing at 0.8% for nine months. We did our last borrowing at 2% for $36 million for a point of pines fire station in our DPW facility. And it just seems like a really, a good time to try to accelerate some of these capital purchases with the rates being so low. So my hope is to have this go to a public hearing and then, and then secure the votes to have the bonding.
Any, any counselors?
Mr. President. Paul Argenzio.
Go ahead, Paul. I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
No problem. First, I'd like to thank the council for taking a moment of silence in honor of my mother, my family, and I appreciate that. Just to speak quickly on a couple of these items that are up for borrowing. As Richard Viscay mentioned, it's for four pieces of equipment for the Public Works Department. I'd like to thank the mayor and counselor over the council. Over the last couple of years, you've been very proactive giving us the equipment that we need. Do have several pieces that are still 2006 that we'd like to replace. Two of them are dump trucks that we use all year long and they are very vital to us during snow events. The trash truck, as Mr. Viscay talked about, and also the sign truck that the Sign Department used in 2006. We would appreciate it if that was passed. Also included is 1.4 million dollars for reconstruction and repair of our public stairs. As you know, we've struggled with these repairs probably for the past 20 years. We have, over the past couple of years, replaced and totally reconstructed our three sets of wooden stairs to in Beauchamp, one in the Shirley Ave area. So we'd like to complete this process. We had an engineering firm of Western and Sampson last year go through all these stairs and gave us a recommendation and a plan to completely reconstruct some and do major repairs on the rest of them. This includes three sets in Beauchamp, two in the Shirley Ave area, and it also includes the front stairs to the Legion Building, for which you've been a nightmare, as you know, for the past few years. So this is another project we'd like to finally get off the ground and we'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, reading the list, I can't tell you how happy I am and the parents of the kids at the Lincoln School that we're finally going to get the HVAC system in place. And I think this is a very, very worthy effort to spend the money for five years. For over five years, the parents at that school and the kids at that school have been waiting patiently for this to happen. And I applaud the administration for sending this forward and I'm looking forward to seeing the kids and the parents finally getting the relief that they need during the summer months. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Paul, any of the three major vehicles, four major vehicles that we're buying, will those be, the old ones be eliminated? Will they be traded in? Will they be used?
The trade-in value really isn't there, so I think we would probably go out and do a bid. Richard Viscay is very familiar with the municipal bid process and we'd probably put those out for auction.
Cool.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to try to have an auction of our surplus goods. We were trying to do it last year, but the COVID and then the winter months came. So we've been gathering up information on a lot of equipment and vehicles and we want to, we want to have the city's first online municipal auction for surplus goods. We hope to generate more interest and ultimately more revenue for these pieces of equipment that are surplus. So more to follow on that.
And through you, Mr. President, to Paul again, the compacted truck, did that replace the small one or are we getting another larger one?
No, the small one still is in fairly good condition. We're in need of a larger capacity.
Excellent. Yeah, good. Now, and the street sweeper, is that just a regular brush sweeper, not a vacuum type?
That's correct. It's a mechanical sweeper. In the future, we are considering buying a Vector-type sweeper. They both kind of have their own uses, you know, that they specialize in. So we are going to replace with a mechanical sweeper and then in the future, hope to get a vacuum sweeper.
That'd be excellent because that's where we get a lot of complaints during the leaf season.
Right.
You know, for the streets. So I think that would help a lot because right now the brush sweeper makes more of a mess than it does picking it up.
Right. They both have their uses, so.
Exactly. I understand that. And then you have one pickup truck with a generator from the Sign Department. Excellent, excellent call because I know they have trouble getting the current generator to go to them at certain times. So I think it's going to help them a lot. They do a great job and I thank you and I thank them for it. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul, question.
Sure.
What do we have now with regard to Vector trucks? Do we have one or two?
I believe there's two Vector trucks now. That's Don Charamella's end of the water sewer. There's two. I believe they're in the market for another one.
Yeah. What I'm going to mention is not directly with water and sewer. However, it does in some way affect the drainage system in the city. My feeling is that there are certain areas in the city that have a large accumulation of leaves coming down every fall. Oak Island for one area, that's, I mean, that's why they call it Oak Island because of the old, you know, oak trees down there. And many other areas too, at Beauchamp and, so what I'm suggesting is, would it be possible to use one of these Vector trucks, assuming that we do wind up with a spare truck, to get some of those leaves off the street? Because once they lay there too long and they go into the catch basins, they do clog up the catch basins and the lateral lines to some degree. And this might be a good way to eliminate, get out there and do it first before that happens. So just a suggestion and it's something that I suggested.
It's a good suggestion, Counselor, and the Vector trucks they have now could certainly clear off catch basins and clean leaves out of catch basins. Don Charamella has been speaking about getting a piece of equipment specifically for the pickup of leaves, so that may be coming in the near future.
Paul, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Counselor Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Mr. Argenzio, the, the, the trucks here, when do you foresee these being put into use? Is it 2021 or the spring of this year?
If the loan authorization is approved, we would immediately order them. They are built, especially the dump trucks, they're probably, I don't know, maybe five months out. The sweeper would come a lot quicker and the trash truck would come a lot quicker. The dump truck's a kind of special order and you'd have them probably by the summer.
Okay. And Mr. Viscay, do you have any idea when the pumper trucks would be available as well or does anybody know when that will come into play?
I would have to defer to the fire chief and his deputy chief on exactly when, but I know that they've gotten some votes on this and it's just a matter of not moving too far ahead until we get the authorization to spend and then, then we can actually kick off and get some more information. But I could follow up with the chief and send you an email on a timeline on that. I do know that Chief Bright and Deputy Chief Cullen are very excited and anxious about replacing some of these older pumper trucks we have. And they were, they were happy to see that we were able to pump it up potentially to grab two of them at the same time. Like I said, the rates are historically low right now. But I could follow up and get some info for you on that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you, Paul, for appropriating the money for the public stairs in, especially in Beauchamp because they're heavily used by people going to the train station and they are concrete and they're deplorable. And I know we fixed them pretty well this summer, but they really need to be renovated. So thank you very much for, you know, putting that money towards the public stairs. It's very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. DeChico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Argenzio and Mr. Viscay, I'm glad to see that the Legion Hall stairs slash ramp is coming back up, but I don't know who would have the answer for it, but I believe back in fiscal year 2017, 2018, $50,000 was appropriated for that already. Is this over and above that? Is it also included in it? When appropriated, is there a timeline and do we eventually have the plans already designed? And will we be using the ADA title to a transition plan documents that I had done by the outside architectural firm that I brought in that gave us all the specs and what should be done there?
Okay, that's a few questions. The first one, the $50,000 was used for the engineering work for the Legion Building. It's not only the handicap ramp, but the whole entrance to the Legion Building needs to be redesigned. Because once, if you were to go up a handicap ramp, once you get to those two doors, you still won't be able to, you know, get in there. We have preliminary plans. We have not told the engineer to go ahead with the final design or the construction documents yet because we were waiting for the appropriation of money, obviously. But when we do do that, we could certainly ask you when and we could have a meeting with the self, the engineer and you can put your plans that you have, make sure that everything is ADA compliant.
Okay. Is there any timetable?
Well, once this money is appropriated, hopefully, then we can get the engineering service back in, create a final design and do construction documents. I can see this going out to bid in the summer with construction maybe late summer, early, early fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other counselors. Oh, sorry. Counselor Guanasso.
Before Mr. Argenzio leaves, I just want to express deepest sorrow for him and his family. And certainly I know what the Argenzios meant and Paul's mother meant to my son. He was so happy to be part of that group and he wanted to extend his greetings to Paul and Colleen and Vincent and express publicly his sorrow for his family. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Counselor.
Okay, so we're going to order these to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor contacted Amazon and asked for assistance in funding affordable housing and a shelter in Revere. Recently, Amazon announced they would be dedicating almost $2 billion to affordable housing efforts.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the other day I was with Veterans Affairs Officer Mark Silvestri and we were actually walking around areas where the homeless live, in tents, in various areas of our city, in particular Wonderland and other areas. To his credit, he literally put money out of his pocket and bought sleeping bags, food, et cetera. And this was early in the morning for these people and I don't want that to go unrecognized. That said, we have a very pervasive problem within our community and that is the homeless. They live along the train stations, they live along the city highways, they live in abandoned buildings. We have a significant population. Many of them are addicted to drugs and alcohol, many of them have psychiatric issues. Amazon is a multi-billion dollar corporation that is going to put a facility over at Showcase Cinemas. They have made public comment about helping with affordable housing and so forth. I can't see why we cannot ask them to do something of this magnitude and work with the First Congregational Church or any other nonprofit to assist with this and provide wraparound programs. Additionally, also add sections of that particular property for emergency housing. Time and again, we face fires within our community and I can remember several years back, fire happening in Ward 2, I believe it was up at the corner of Hitchbone Street. And nonetheless, many people were displaced and we were putting carts in the Revere High School waiting for the Red Cross to come with food. And people like Sabia from Good Diner and other, you know, good neighbors such as Kelly's Joes Beef donated food that, that day. So I think that this is something that we could work forward with. I've spoken to Mayor Arigo about this in the past. He seemed very much in favor of this and I think this is just a process that we have to enter into. And at the end of the day, I think this speaks for itself. Really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I wholeheartedly support this motion. With Amazon coming in Ward 6 in the Showcase Cinema, I think this is a great idea. Some may not realize, even in Ward 6, we've been experiencing some homelessness issues of individuals living in our neighborhood in West Revere, particularly, believe it or not, near the Showcase Cinema. There's a gentleman I know at one point under the bridge at Coquelin Circle and some others in, in my ward. So I would love to see this come to fruition and I support it 100%. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by the Revere City Council that the City Council present a certificate of commendation to the owners of the iconic Banana Boat in recognition of their retirement after 43 years in business.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I knew that the Banana Boat has, and the Schenna family has touched all the counselors, so I wanted to include the entire body. And I'm sure every counselor has had a ice cream there, knows the Schenna family and would like to say something. So I'm going to hold my comments to next week when we recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to ensure that the following roadways are plowed during snowstorms, all streets located off of Broad Sound Avenue and lower Beauchamp.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our last snowstorm, I got a numerous amount of calls that the lower half of Beauchamp, Jones Road with Ave, all the tight streets that you really can't get down, they really weren't being plowed. The other thing I got was all the paper streets off of Broad Sound Ave, they weren't plowed. I called the mayor and the mayor had a bogcat go down there and that was at 8 o'clock at night. So I'm just asking for the DPW and the snowplowers to just give some TLC to the lower half of Beauchamp. of Beauchamp and to some of the paper streets off of Broad Sound Ave. Thank you for the next snowstorm.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to forward a communication to the city council requesting an expenditure from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the purpose of constructing a pump station at the lower end of Pearl Avenue due to the consistent and severe flooding occurring in this area of the city.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the residents that live on the lower half of Pearl Ave, they need a break. They have been inundated with flooding for years. They abut the ocean, and they're abutting the marshland. And now, because of the, there's so much water going on with the flooding down there, every time it rains, they get at least six inches of water. So, I'm just asking to help with the flooding. I'm asking the mayor to appropriate money from the Community Improvement Trust Fund, put a little small pumping station to help alleviate the flooding down there on the lower half of Pearl Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor, in conjunction with the Public Health Director, be requested to provide an update for the city council and Revere residents on the COVID-19 vaccination rollout with regards to priorities for age, health, status, and needs for specific professions receiving preference.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think Public Health Director Buck is on as well. I did want to, this is by no means criticism. If anything, I'd like to commend Ms. Buck and Dr. Kong and the city for, you know, really doing so far a good job with the rollout. Obviously, they helped coordinate the 500-plus public safety officials that were vaccinated just recently between the towns of Winter, Revere, and Chelsea. So, very good job. I just think that the general public wants to get as much communication as possible on the rollout process, the priority list, how, you know, some people have asked, when they do a vaccination, whether it was for the public safety officials or some of the people in List One or Phase One, if there's a few extra vaccinations, is there going to be a priority call list? And then just continuing to overly communicate this to the residents of Revere, it's very important, obviously, to many, many residents of Revere. Is there a way that we can put up a progress chart, like we've done with census or things like that, to say, hey, listen, you know, we're at 55,000 residents, and we're at 20%, 30%, et cetera, et cetera? And then, again, just continuing to overcommunicate it. So, I know Ms. Buck is on, and I appreciate you being on. I'm not sure if she has any comments. And I noticed while we were in the chambers tonight, Revere just sent out a couple new communications on a town hall meeting for Wednesday. And that's pretty much what I was asking for. So, thanks for listening. It looks like you guys are going to have a town hall on Wednesday to discuss this. Through you to Ms. Buck.
Mr. President, just to let you know, I'd like to ask a question, but I'm having a hot time raising my hand online.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. So, I can give some updates about the vaccine process and where we are right now. So, we are following the state's guidance in terms of following the phases that they have put out. As you mentioned, we finished first responders' first dose last week. Our next clinic for 500 doses is this Thursday. Sorry, all my days are jumbling together at this point. This Thursday for 500 doses, and this is, we're hoping to kind of complete Phase One in our communities, which means that anyone who's eligible for Phase One will have the opportunity to come through that clinic. And then, we get into a little bit of, kind of rolling with the punches in terms of where we go from here. So, we are putting on a town hall, me and Dr. Kong, that's going to be on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, where we'll hope we'll be able to answer some questions about the vaccine itself and some questions about the vaccine rollout process. So, that will be happening. We are also actively planning for our schools. And so, what that looks like is, we sent out an email, Dr. Kelly sent out an email today to get kind of like a number of how many of our school staff will be getting the vaccine through us. So, that planning process has started. We already are in talks with Dr. Kelly about what that would look like, where we would do the clinics, how we would roll it out. So, that planning process is ongoing. So, that's kind of where we are with the schools. We have not been given a date from the state in terms of when we can start vaccinating teachers. Remember, the priority, so Phase Two, Priority One is 75-plus. Phase Three, Phase, sorry, Phase Two, Priority Two was just changed today to be 65-plus and two comorbidities. And then, Phase Two, Priority Three is all the essential workers. So, education, early education, grocery store workers, a bunch of people fit into that, Phase Two, Priority Three. We have not been given essentially a go-live date for that priority yet. But we are trying to actively be ready for when that happens. So, for our seniors, we are kind of, we, so Deb and I did a kind of a PSA to our seniors, and that went out earlier this week, actually, maybe even last week now. Like I said, my days are all getting jumbled about what that, signing up for kind of alerts and information, that's through revere.org. There's a Google form that people can sign up for. And we kind of did a, kind of a rundown of the locations that the vaccine will be available in the near future. So, those primary care providers will start to have vaccine stock, pharmacies will start to have vaccine stock, and then also the Board of Health will be an option to help people who don't kind of fall into the easily determined, easily accessible areas. And so, that will be an option, too. So, the thing about the vaccine rollout is, it is changing literally every day. We get new information from the state in terms of the stock we are eligible to order, in terms of the phasing, it changes rapidly. So, communication is hard, and we recognize that a lot of our residents don't feel like they're getting the most up-to-date communication. And so, to help remedy that, we will be sending kind of, I don't want to say reminders, but like updates to everyone who's put their name on the Google form on revere.org. We're going to try to do it weekly, and we're going to try to get the first one out tomorrow in terms of, like, hey, you know, this is where we are, this is where you should be looking, this is what's coming up on the horizon. Because we do recognize that the communication factor has been different in this state than other states. You know, Massachusetts, at this point, does not have like a centralized scheduling system. It is a little bit more piecemeal because of, you know, because of the local boards of health impact, because of the way that Massachusetts' public health system is set up. And so, it can seem kind of confusing and overwhelming, and not that there's one centralized location. So, we're going to try to put out communications as frequently as possible now that we're entering phases where much more of our residents are going to be captured. And so, that communication is ongoing. So, I know I kind of just kind of dumped a lot of information, but the planning is actively happening. And like I said, our next, we're not behind, you know...
You're muted.
Sorry. We're following the phases, and we, so far, we haven't missed a phase. We're right on schedule, and we'll continue to follow that through as things change. And we'll be, you know, we'll order when we can, we'll get clinics up as we can.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Buck, for your commentary. Quick question, how many vaccines do we have currently in our possession?
We have zero vaccines in our possession. We've given out every vaccine that we had. We've given 600 doses to our first responders.
When do you think our next allotment will be?
So, the state, so the ordering, the way that the ordering works is, you can order, you can kind of report to the state what your allotment is and what you have currently in stock every week. So, our, we ordered 500 doses for our clinic on Thursday, and so, we are expecting to get the 500 doses, well, we have to get them before Thursday, so...
So, one thing that I'm concerned about is that we did a SARS-1 tabletop exercise with Dr. Bedinger, Nick Katnauzo was the Board of Health Director at that time, and they developed a mass medical dispensing protocol for the city of Revere. I'm kind of concerned as to why that isn't being implemented in the sense that it actually is, particularly for this particular issue, in this particular setup, where it is to administer and inoculate people at a very quick basis. Now, I guess the question is, if we were tomorrow to ask the state for 2,000 vials of this particular vaccine, would we be able to get it? And more importantly, do we have the staffing in order to do this?
No, that's not how the state rollout has, is being implemented at this time. So...
Are we contacting the region, Region Four, Region Five, in order to get it? Are we going through them? Or are we going through another group of people through DPH? How is this working?
Okay, so, it's, again, it's a piecemeal approach. So, as a Board of Health, we order the vaccine based on the clinics that we have set up. So, we are one option in our community in terms of getting the vaccine. We order it based on what we think we have capacity. And when I say what we think we have capacity, I mean, we set up clinics as the phases become available. So, as soon as Phase One became eligible, like late last week, you know, we had a plan in place to get a clinic set up for 500 people. So, we ordered 500 doses based on that clinic eligibility. So, the state, at this point, is not allowed, because to be, you know, the state is getting their doses from the federal government. And so, they have to base who they allot doses to, based on the supply that they have. So, we are, at this point, we are, we are able to order, and again, they change this quite frequently, we are able to order 400 doses every week as a local board of health. But again, the local board of health is not the only option for our residents to get the vaccine. And very quickly, there's going to be a lot other, there's going to be many other options for them to get the vaccine. So, as a Board of Health, we are one option, we are one part of the solution, we are not the whole solution. But we are not able to order 2,000 doses as a local board of health.
So, I guess my question is, our seniors are probably the most vulnerable at this point, considering what the literature states, and those people with underlying medical conditions. Additionally, I guess my other question is, how many nurses and pharmacists and other people that are able to actually give injections are available to the Board of Health to do this? I, myself, as a nurse, obviously can do this, and surely pharmacists do now by law. So, what do we have as a, I guess, as a lineup as far as volunteer nurses in order to do this? How many are at your disposal? And more importantly, what are we doing in order to tap that particular, you know, group of volunteers that I know that we have? And more importantly, we have access to them by looking through the state's licensure in order to get this done. And my thought is, why aren't we just banging out the 400 per week and just identifying people that need that? I know they can go to their primary care physician and elsewhere, but, you know, considering what's going on, I mean...
So, I can answer your questions about, you know, staffing availability. We, all of our school nurses are actively involved in the vaccination process, not only our school nurses, but Winterp and Chelsea's as well. We also have activated the Medical Reserve Corps, so we're pulling them in as well to help with staffing. We've had also an outgoing, sorry, not an outgoing, an outpouring of support for, from residents who want to be involved and who want to volunteer their time as well. We have a lot of staff that can, that can help with the process. And then, those avenues are all being, you know, worked on and activated, and, you know, we don't have a shortage of people to give our doses. That's definitely not something we're experiencing. So, your second point about, why aren't we doing 400 doses a day, a week? Well, we are in some ways, right? So, we started with our first responders. Those were more than 400 doses a week. We did 600 doses. We're doing 500 doses this week. Next week, if we ordered 400 more doses, us, along with other organizations that we're actively partnering with, will be able to get those to the resident 75-plus. Because, remember, just today, we found out that the 75-plus are going to be open, and that phase is going to be open on February 1st. That happened today. So, you know, we're all, what we, we kind of have to roll with the punches in terms of what the state is kind of throwing at us. So, also today, we met with community partners, and we have a plan, we have a plan for our 75-plus, for our 75-plus residents to be getting information from not just the Board of Health, but the senior center. And so, then, they will be able to get registered for a vaccine. We are part of the solution. We, you know, we, as a Board of Health, we will be vaccinating seniors, but we will also have other partners in the community who are able to start the week of February 1st to vaccinate seniors as well. And the throughput for that really is dependent on the supply we get from the state. The throughput on our community partners is also dependent on the supply we get from the state. But at this point, we have, we have not hesitated in completing phases as they come along.
No, and I don't want you to ever think that I was inferring that. First of all, your job is tantamount, and I have just a question to sort of put out there from what I've been asked from other people.
Counselor Rotundo.
You create everything you're doing, and please don't ever take, you know, my questioning as anything other than, you know...
No, I understand completely.
Counselor Rotundo, I'm going to send this to your committee.
Thank you.
Because, you know, otherwise, we'll be here all night.
Mr. President, if, you know, you might as well just place it on file. The good thing is, Ms. Buck and Natalie, Ms. Dr. Kong are having a town hall on Wednesday. So, they're going to answer a lot of the questions.
Yeah.
I agree, and I think, you know...
I agree with Counselor Keefe.
I think what we should do at this point is talk about what time the town hall is and how it's accessible, because I understand it's accessible by many ways. So, Ms. Buck, if you would give us a preview of that and when it's available, how it's available to everybody. Thank you.
And Ms. Buck, I want to thank you for my questions. More importantly, I have full faith in you and Dr. Kong, and I greatly appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you. You know, this is, this is, this is a bumpy process. We make, we have made many mistakes, we will continue to make them. But we are, we are trying not to hesitate in anything that we do. So, when we have the green light, we try to move on it. And that's, that's why in Revere, you know, some of our other communities have not had clinics in their own communities. We have had, this will be our fourth coming up on Thursday, and so, we've tried not to hesitate as a Board of Health. But, you know, the process of vaccinating an entire country, or an entire state, or an entire city, has never been attempted like this before. And so, like I said, the Board of Health itself is one component of the solution. And, and I think, you know, every other, every other organization, every other healthcare provider is scrambling to get the plans in place as well, and it will come on board soon. But I recognize that residents are asking all of you that, like, what's the deal? Where are we? And it's not fast enough. No one's saying that this process has been fast enough for anyone. We're trying to do our best, and we know it's a slow-going, and it looks different than other states, who many, you know, you hear on the news that many other states have done things differently, and it's going to look differently. So, I'll just say that the town hall is on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. It will be on Facebook Live. And so, the process for getting that out will go out on our social media to advertise it. But it's the same type of forum that we've used for many other town halls.
Thank you very much.
If I'm not mistaken, it's also available on local cable, because not everybody does Facebook Live. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that it is also, we partner with... Yes, I believe that it is also, we partner with Revere TV to get it out there.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk. Oh, we have some, someone else in there?
One resident, one attendee, Shay Hosani. Has her hand raised?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hello. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you very much, Lauren, and thank you, Dr. Kong, for everything that you guys are doing for the community. I just have a question in terms of what is the criteria on what is, who is a priority? Like, I understand seniors and those who are vulnerable with underlying conditions are obviously considered as, as top of the priority list, but in terms of like hospital staff, I, obviously the nurses and the doctors are going to be priority, but what about the people who work in like janitorial occupations in the hospital? Personally, I think they're at much of a risk to COVID, as the nurses and doctors especially, since they clean up after, like, after a COVID patient has either gone or has unfortunately passed away. So my final, my question is in general, like, what exactly is the criteria of what makes someone a priority, other than the obvious, of course?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so from what we, you know, from what we've been kind of in communication with for most of the, for most of the hospitals in our area is that they are vaccinating their staff based on the state's priority phases. And that's a question that probably would be better directed towards the hospital administration in terms of what they've done individually for their staffs. You know, there's, yeah, I'm not sure I can answer that one with a ton of certainty because it's, it's been done, most of the vaccinating of hospital staff has been done within the hospital systems themselves.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on. Yeah. Motion placed on, my apologies. Motion's placed on file.
Mr. President?
Counselor Serino.
May I ask for a motion to suspend rules in order to take up a late motion that I filed since, I'm hoping Lauren is still on the call, but I had filed a late motion that involves, kind of goes hand in hand with the vaccine rollout?
Motion to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Counsel item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the city council send the attached letter to Governor Baker requesting that his administration identify and designate a COVID-19 vaccination site or sites in the city of Revere for vaccinations of the public at large. A Boston Globe article published this past weekend highlighted disparities in vaccine access to Black and Latino populations of Suffolk County. In addition to being a community with a large immigrant population, Revere has been one of the hardest-hit communities in the Commonwealth throughout the pandemic. And as of right now, the only two mass vaccination sites in Suffolk County are in South Boston and Fenway Park. Revere residents should not have to travel into Boston to receive the COVID vaccination, particularly when more affluent communities in the metro west have vaccination sites on their doorsteps.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was a bit dismayed when I read that article that came out in the Boston Globe this weekend. You know, Revere, obviously, we are a community of immigrants, and dare I say that it's because of our residents that our region has kind of kept going through COVID. You know, in addition to first responders and healthcare workers, a lot of our residents who work in grocery stores, who work in hotels, who work at the airport, who work in the service industry, in the kitchens of the restaurants that we get takeout from, that's a large population of our, of our city. So I'm glad to hear, Lauren, that we are, you know, we're ready for the senior population in Revere, but looking forward and moving forward as the rollout continues, I really, I, you know, and this, this isn't a slight on Lauren or the city, this is more toward Governor Baker and the Baker administration for not initially prioritizing communities of color and, I don't want to say lower-income communities, but communities like Revere, like Chelsea, who have been hit hardest. There have been some developments today. Secretary Sutter's announced that they, the administration would now prioritize vaccination sites at pharmacies in communities like Revere and Chelsea. However, I do think that it's important that we, as a city council, go on record and submit this letter to Governor Baker. I know it was a late communication, a late motion. Perhaps the clerk could read it into the record if you guys would like. But I do think Governor Baker and the administration should be prioritizing Revere. Our residents shouldn't have to go outside the city. So thank you, Mr. President.
I, I think, I think we can waive the reading, but I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. President, can we have a roll call to send it to the governor? Unless there are other.
I think we can just, I don't think we, all in favor, all opposed, is good enough, I think. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The chance for regular business.
Recharge of the regular business.
Counsel item number 18, motion presented by Counselors Serino and Keith that the city council send the attached letter to the Honorable Charles D. Baker, Governor, and Highway Administrator Jonathan Gulliver to request that the Baker administration prioritize the building of a sound barrier along Route 1, northbound and southbound from Copeland Circle to Route 16 in the city of Revere and their next capital investment plan. It's noted that Counselors Zambudo and Janino are recused from this motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Serino put this together, and we grouped, we grouped up on it, considering that it was, we were very excited to see that the transportation bond bill was passed, and one of the expenditures was to assist in sound barriers for Route 1 that surround Revere. So a lot of that borders Ward 4 and Ward 6. So we're extremely excited. Now, obviously, this is, there's always an opportunity for someone in the, at the state level to continue to try and cut that out or to try to ignore that appropriation. So Counselor Serino and I aren't exactly celebrating just yet. What I would say is that this is where we can empower the residents of Revere, especially those bordering that Route 1, to reach out to your local legislature, reach out to the governor's office, reach out to other elected officials outside of just us, because we are always going to advocate for it, to let them know that you're not going to forget about it, that we're not going to just ignore it, and that it won't just go away. And then in three years, we're going to say, hey, whatever happened to that money that was authorized? So we're very happy to send this letter in hopes that you all will sign on, because it's something that Revere needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keith. Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, so this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. Like Counselor Keith said, this is a bond bill authorization that was authorized by the House and the Senate in which the governor signed. However, think of it like a, you know, a credit limit, so to speak. And the governor can choose which projects he and his administration would like to fund that are included in this laundry list of things and items that are in the bill. So many residents in Ward 6 have been complaining for years about the sound, and it is a serious quality of life issue. And now is the time for us to really step it up with the governor and request that he authorize these funds. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I congratulate both councils for pushing this again. You know that myself and yourself and Council Powers and Council Banas, who have been on the council for many years, and I can tell you, back in 2008, we were promised these barriers when they were supposed to widen Route 1 because of the Roseland property and Overlook Ridge project, which several times we have been slapped in the face and given slaps in the back of the heads, saying, ha, ha, we got you. Well, you know, I just hope that this governor, I know Governor Patrick slapped us, refused to give it to us when it was in the bond bill back in the teens. And I just hope that Governor Baker appreciates all the help we've been giving him, our mayor, and everybody involved. But we have to get to the other, the other representatives to help push this through. And I know Representative Donato was a big supporter of it back then. So I just hope this thing goes through this time, because, you know, I know it's not my ward, but it's, it affects everybody. And I hope that it does go through, and the governor does approve this expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Counsel item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the mayor be requested to commission a banner in honor of and depicting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to be displayed on the front of City Hall during the month of February in recognition of Black History Month.
I'll just speak, if it's the will of the council, I'll just speak from the chair briefly on this. Obviously, myself and a lot of people look at Martin Luther King as, as a hero. He stood for a lot of the things that we all stand for. His biggest thing was content of character, not color of skin. He was for peaceful protests. He was pro-life. There's many things that I find myself in common with this great man. And unfortunately, I think, I'm not sure we're teaching history as well as we should in the schools today. And I'm not sure a lot of young people actually know a lot about this man. So I felt it appropriate that we honor him in, on Black History Month, and perhaps we can generate some of that education about what he was all about. So that's what I have. Thank you. Mr. President, you have a couple of people that want to come on? So we're going to recognize Samea.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Hi, I am a longtime Revere resident and activist in the community, and I was just interested in hearing more about, like, what motivated this specific action, not just by Counselor Zambudo, but also anyone who on the city council is trying to push for this, only because I've noticed that, especially in the past year, when there were peaceful protests being held locally, that there was only two electeds in attendance coming in support of the children that were organizing these protests. And the person, the only person that is present today that was there was Steve Morabito. So I'm just kind of interested in hearing more about whether there was some sort of, like, change in heart, or if this is even at all indicative of, you know, having some sort of support for Black Lives and Young Black Lives, Young Black Lives Matter organizers within the city.
Excuse me, can we have your name and address again for the record? We didn't catch that.
Yeah, sorry. My name is Samea LaRusi, and I live at 123 Garfield in Ward 2.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Keith.
Thank you very much. Samea, thanks for joining us tonight. I'm not quite sure what you were referencing as far as the peaceful protest, or if you have that list. I was, I know I was in attendance 1,000%. And I, and I guess you're calling out and asking us to reference, you know, our history on how we have been respectful of the community. And I can just tell you that I don't sit there and list every accomplishment that I may or may not have had, but I think my actions speak for themselves, and people that know me well, and people in the residents of Revere, regardless of their color, know that, how I've represented them. I think there's been a number of councils that were on those march peaceful protests. So I just want to make sure that you're getting your facts straight, just so you're being respectful of that. Thank you very much.
I don't like to go back and forth, Counselor, but that wasn't, my reference was not to any counselors or anybody for that man.
No, 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 I totally agree.
I was trying to, I was trying to state what Martin Luther King stood for.
Correct.
Simply that, not.
Thank you.
Not pointing to anybody in a negative way, but just for history's sake, who this man was and what it's about, and why my motion is to honor him in the month of Black History Month. I just felt it was completely appropriate. Do we have another?
There is another one.
Go right ahead.
Hello, just to reintroduce myself, my name is Shema Hosani. I'm from 525 Beach Street. I just have something for you guys to consider, to, why not keep the banner, or whatever banner you guys are going to do, until, not until the end of February? I think that that banner should stay wherever you guys decide to put it until our own epidemic of racism in our city ends. I think we all can agree that there's some sort of systematic racism going on in our city that is plaguing our communities. And I feel like having that banner up in memory of MLK and in memory of Black History Month should not just end until the end of February, but until we could figure out how to become more of an inclusive community. In no respect to, I'm not calling anyone out, I, I'm not, this is not a blaming game. You guys, you guys know me, I don't blame anyone. I blame myself for not doing as much as I can to fight the systematic racism in our city. But I feel like having that banner up until we can figure out what situation, how we can work along each other, is, is something that we should do and not just take it down at the end of the month. Because that just shows that, oh, we only put up that banner. In my perspective as a human rights activist, I feel like having that banner just for Black History Month means that, oh, we only care about Black lives and Black history only for the month of February, while it should be something that's year-round, 24/7, 365 days a week. So that's just like my two cents on it, but I think that banner should stay up. I know, but, I don't know about everyone else, but I feel like it just makes us, that shows that we're putting a foot forward in being a more of an inclusive community, because I know that you guys, you guys care about, you know, I have no doubt that you guys care about the community, but it just shows that, like, it's something that feels like, okay, we're going to move a step forward, and this is how we're going to do it, and we're not going to take the banner down just for February. So that's just my two cents, and I hope you guys can take it into consideration.
Thank you. I'll briefly respond to you. We only temporarily affix things to City Hall, they're never permanent, and that's why my motion calls for it to be up for the month of Black History Month. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with all due respect to Samea, Counsel Morabito was not the only person at that march. I was there, Counsel Banas was there, we stood on City Hall steps with the speakers, supporting that march in the Black Lives Matter program. So it's, you know, it's nothing that we think is small, we want to get involved, and we did. And, you know, I just want people to know that, you know, Counsel Morabito was not the only person there. If there were other councils there, I don't know that. But I know Counsel Banas and myself stood side by side in those steps, supporting the speakers. So with all due respect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Novoseltsky. And seeing no more people, on the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Late communication from the Superintendent of Public Schools requesting approval of bond authorizations for MSBA accelerated repairs at the Lincoln and Beauchamp schools.
Audit to a public hearing. No further business, the council will stand adjourned until?
Mr. President, with all due respect, if I may.
February, oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Counselor Novoseltsky.
Public service announcement. I know we're all, we're all upset at ASEAN. Public service announcement. Um, I know we're all, we're all upset at ASEAN and the way they do business in the city. I just want everybody to know that Wednesday at 1 o'clock on a Zoom call, there's a public hearing on a, uh, sale of ASEAN to another organization. And, you know, I urge as many people to go on, and especially us as city officials, uh, to let them know how unhappy we are with their service. They cut wires from, uh, K, uh, from the K, current cable company Comcast, and they leave them hang, you know, hanging down and wrapped around telephone poles. We've all been complaining about this over the last several months. And I think we ought to go online, let them know how we feel, and, you know, pursue it. Let the new company know that, you know, we, we won't put up with this anymore. So, thank you. That's Wednesday, 1 o'clock, uh, Zoom call. Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Counsel. I'll certainly try to participate. Uh, so we're adjourned until February 8th. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you. Good night.